Let's call this meeting into order. George, could you take role?
Colonel Evans?
Here.
Mr. Rosen?
Here.
Mrs. Ludwig?
Here.
Mr. Miko?
Here.
Mr. Neso?
Here.
All present.
Stand for the pledge. Pledge of Allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
District goals. My agenda keeps closing on my laptop here, so... Oh, we'll go through district goals. Every meeting, we state our district goals and we talk about the... We have three district goals. The first one is student achievement. The second one, in on student achievement, we're gonna see... We're gonna go through our state report card tonight to go through some of how well we're doing. And I think we're doing great, even with that moving target they call the state report card. So, we're gonna take a look at that. Our second goal is financial prudence, and we've been focused heavily on that with the upcoming levy and working through those numbers. So, we're focused on that as always. The last one is community engagement, and we utilize our community to supplement where we can and help us wherever we can, and I have an example of that tonight. One of the things with our football program, we have the Strongsville... We have the SFL, and that program is fully integrated into our football program. So, it brings young talent in, and our coaches work with that league to make sure that, you know, they know the plays, they know our drills, they know everything. And most importantly, they know how important it is and what it is to be a Mustang. We've created an identical program like that for our basketball program. It's called the SBL. And in the community members, there were three especially. Chris Miller, Chad, and Ted Wypassik. And those three guys, Chad Dasher, sorry. Those three guys really worked hard to put this league together. And it is... It's a program for, I believe, three through sixth graders. And the program's gonna be supervised and man... Not managed, but supervised certainly by our head basketball coaches on both the boys and the girl's side. So, Mr. Lipowski and Mr. Welch are gonna be involved in a lot of the aspects of the drills and all that kinda stuff. And I just bring that up because tryouts are this Sunday. So, Sunday, the 7th, at the middle school. You can check it out online. You can go there. We're looking for the 20 best basketball players in each league. There's gonna be tryouts. And one of the amazing things is when we put this league together, a lot of people recognize that there was a void there. And so, some of the communities that are gonna play in this league, it's not just playing... We've got some really good talent to go against. So, Avon, Avon Lake, Bay Village, North Ridgeville, us, Midview, Olmsted, Westlake, Lakewood, Berea, Lyria, Lorraine, Rocky River, Fairview Park, Columbia Station, Brookside, Clearview, Keystone, North Olmsted, also... All those schools jumped in because they realized that this is a really good program. And it's gonna funnel... It's a feeder program into our middle school and high school basketball program. So, I just wanted to thank, you know, once again, Chris Miller, Chad Dasher, and Ted Wypassik for all the hard work they put into pulling this league together. And so, it's just an example. With that, we'll go on to... We don't have any public comment tonight. We have the superintendent's report, and Cameron?
Thank you, Mr. Neso. We do have one item. As you said, the state report card recently came out. We were pleased with the progress that we made. And to go into the details, our director of curriculum, Erin Green, has some information to share with the board and the community. Erin?
Thank you. So, good evening. As we just heard, I'm gonna talk tonight about our state report card that was released last September, about a month ago now. And this is the way that the state ranks or rates districts across the state. So, out of 608 school districts, we're gonna see how we fared as a district. It also ranks each of the individual school buildings. So, up here, you can see, this is the first year that we have an overall letter grade on the report card. Overall, Strongsville City Schools earned a B as a district. Graded on six categories, which are listed there. I'll go into a little more detail about them. It's achievement, gap closing, K-3 literacy, progress, graduation, and prepared for success. So, on the left-hand side, I have a chart showing districts in Ohio and how they fared with their overall letter grades. You can see that there were 28 districts that earned As, 191 that earned Bs, 253 Cs, 122 Ds, and 14 Fs. Out of 31 districts in Cuyahoga County, as Mr. Raiba shared last time, we ranked eighth, so that puts us in the top 26 percent. And we're in a pretty tough, rigorous academic county because, as you can see below, when we correlate our grades in each of the six categories, kind of on a GPA scale, a 4-3-2-1 correlating with A, B, C, D, puts us 49th in the state of Ohio for our grade card. And that is the top 8 percent of the state. So, that's really impressive. There are a lot of different ways. You can look at the report card. You can grade the data. You can analyze it. But I think overall, that's a really good measure of the composite report card and how we fared. So, really proud of that for our district. This is the overall report card, and you can see the six components are listed there. Overall, we had As in three categories and Cs in three categories. The top four are the ones I would consider of the highest importance for us as a district. And I'll explain a little bit more of the detail as to how we get those grades. But that averages out, as you can see down at the bottom there, as a B overall. I'm gonna compare our report card this year to last year and then talk about some of the individual components. But first, I wanna show you the distribution of where districts in Ohio fell. Circled where Strongsville fell on that as well. So, you can see there is some correlation. In the areas in which we earned Cs, you can see that there were fewer As and Bs in those categories. So, the numbers are small there, but hopefully you can read the percentages. Again, the three areas of As did really well there and proud of those accomplishments. And then, we do have some work to do as well. So, this is 1617 report card. This is last year's report card. There was not an overall grade. As we said, it's the first year they gave the overall grade. But just kind of eyeballing it, you can see that we've made gains. We had two... Or, I'm sorry, three Cs, an A, a B, and a D, which would probably factor out to about a C, I would say, overall, if they had given a letter grade. Looking at last year's compared to this year, so side by side, you can see there are a couple areas that I put the purple stars around. Those are the two areas in which we brought up the composite grade. So, the gap closing, we went from a D to an A. And then, the progress went from a B to an A. And additionally, some of the subcomponents, the ones that I circled and read, those also went up. So, there were six subcomponent areas in which we raised our letter grade and no areas in which we dropped. So, that is quite an accomplishment. And as I just alluded to, six grades of the subcomponent areas we improved in, two overall areas, both went to As. And then, within the buildings, we reached 14 more indicators than we had in previous years. So, what that means at the building level, for example, Maraski, last year, they didn't meet any indicators out of seven. This year, they met six out of seven. So, they made huge gains. And overall, we had 14 areas across our buildings that made gains in those. Here is starting to look at the subcomponents. Our achievement grade of a C. And you can see the red check... I'm sorry, the red X's are areas in which we did not meet the 80 percent indicator. Green checkmarks are areas in which we did. And you will notice that the state does not round up. So, unfortunately, we have one, which is a 79.6 percent. That is considered not met in the eyes of the state. However, we use that as an opportunity of knowing we can't be that close. We have to get more kids, so we're not on the edge there. So, this is the... I'm sorry, the indicators from this current year. And again, I'll break those down a little bit further here. Last three years of data are here. And I would say the last three years are when we've had the most consistent format of a test. So, it's online. It's the air test, as we call it. And you can see from 16 to 18, we have the delta. And I put the circles in there, so anything that's a red number, we've gone down. Green circles, or I'm sorry, black print are areas in which we've increased. So, I just wanted to focus on a couple of the areas, although you have all of the data. Red circles in third grade ELA, last year, we did meet the target. Although we were close, we met it at an 80.4 percent. This year, we dropped to a 79. So, what that signifies is we have to continue to focus in that area, and that is more than just a third grade indicator. So, we look at kindergarten, first, and second, and we build upon those areas. In fifth grade science, there was a big gain, a 5 percent increase from 17 to 18. Also, ELA, very pleased to see they went up from 76 percent to meeting the indicator. And the last green circle I have on there is a huge gain. Although seventh grade English Language Arts didn't meet the indicator and we didn't get the checkmark for that, they went up 13.6 percent. So, that's the one where they ended at a 79.6 percent, which is probably one student difference of them passing or not. So, again, that just is kind of an impetus for us to continue to work hard, showing that what we're doing is working. And if we're finding something isn't working, we can look at that data and say, "What do we need to do differently?" Some additional circles here, points of emphasis. Seventh grade math, again, we didn't meet that 80 percent, but they had 11.7 increase. So, that's pretty substantial. Eighth grade is an area in which we're taking a hard look because we know that there's an area of need there. So, especially with English Language Arts, we're still low in that passage indicator, and we went down. So, as I'll talk about, we're using a lot of our resources, a lot of our energies, and we are digging into that data. We are working with teachers. We are finding out what can we do to show... Have the kids show what they know on the test and perform, so we meet that indicator. Because it's not all about the test, but it's a little bit about the test. Grade eight math also went down just 1.4 percent. However, we haven't yet met the indicator. And just to point out, that doesn't include any of the eighth grade algebra students. So, that is solely eighth grade students that have not taken algebra. Just like our algebra indicator, we have it broken down. We have eighth grade middle school or seventh grade middle school algebra students, and then we have high school algebra students as well. So, that eighth grade is solely the eighth grade students. The last couple circles there are all at the high school. There are actually five green circles, and they made huge gains at the high school. Really proud of what they were able to do there. We see numbers in 16 percent gains, 10, 15. And then, very bottom there, second-time test takers. So, those are students who have previously failed the test. The state asks or sets the target that we wanna get 25 percent of them to pass. And our score there, we had 58 percent of them. So, that's a pretty good percentage as well.
Erin, I have a question.
Sure.
If you don't mind. How much of this do you think is test-taking versus actual knowledge that the kids lack? Do you have enough feel for that?
We do. We're starting to learn the test a little bit better. You know, there's a difference between we know things and then, when you add the technology component in, and the kids are expected to do a lot of typing and then the different drag-and-drops and match and click boxes. It does. I heard actually 8 percent today is some of the technology component that may weigh in. But what we're doing is, I don't... When I tell the teachers this, I don't think that you didn't teach fractions or this standard. I think we didn't teach it to the depth that the test was gonna ask it. So, now, we're getting a better understanding. We're looking at released questions. We're seeing, okay, this is the expectation of students. They need to know this much about the standard at this grade level. So, let's ensure we're teaching it, but we're teaching it in a way that they're gonna be able to show what they know. So, I would say, you know, it's a little bit of learning the system and then also making sure we're practicing with that technology component as well.
Is the technology a bigger issue at the younger grades?
It is. In state law, they are looking at bringing back paper for third grade, starting next year. We haven't made that determination of what we're gonna do, but that... It does play a part into it. You know, third graders in the fall are basically still second graders and asking them to type multi-paragraph essays, it's a challenge.
The unified classroom, thank you.
Yes.
That we're trying to get not just one third-grade teacher, but all third-grade teachers to kind of work on and work through. Is that part of trying to get these scores up? Is it part of being able to say, "Hey, take a look at my lesson plans, and this is what I'm doing," and being able to share that information, that data, that education, I should say, for all the teachers that are in the buildings?
Absolutely. And we've started that this year with our common assessments. But what that component will do is make it easier to share. And so, instead of, you know, copying or, you know, "Hand me your lesson plans," or "Let me share them via Google Doc," it's all right there. And then, the other nice piece is the kids will take the assessments online, which will help them with the technology component. And then, it's a quick grade, a quick turnaround as well.
Erin, at the high school, does it matter if you're in the basic geometry class or the honors geometry class? Are they all taking this exam at the same time?
They are.
Okay.
So, it's all factored together. It's, yeah, just geometry.
And like biology, just doesn't matter what grade you're in that you're taking.
Correct.
Biology, you still have to take this test.
It's when you're taking the course, they expect you to take the assessment. Moving on to the next measure here, we have our gap closing. And I included just two components, the language arts and math. And again, I know it's very small, but green is good. That means we made the percentage there. So, really, this is our subgroups of students. So, traditionally, subgroups of students don't perform as well. And that's across the state. That's across the nation. So, the state has put into place this measure to ensure that we are trying to close the gap for those students who are of different economically disadvantaged or are different multiracial, students with disabilities, English learners, et cetera. This is a new way they configured it this year. And the challenge is they're gonna continue to raise the bar each year. So, we met it very, you know, very clearly, I guess, this year. It will continue to elevate the bar. I do anticipate that we'll still be able to reach this. But again, it goes a long way to showing that we're educating all kids. You know, it's easy to educate those who are there and they're... Want to be there. And they do their homework, and we have everything in place for them. It's more challenging if they're not... English is not their first language. Or they're struggling in different ways. Or they have students on IEPs. So, we're making sure that we are meeting the needs of our... All students in our classrooms. Next measure, the progress. This is the one of which I am the most proud of. And that's because it's showing not only are the students meeting the benchmark, but are they making growth? And that's what really truly matters to me. Even if they start down here, you know, if they don't pass the test, have they made growth? And with this component, a C is actually one year's growth. So, a B is equal to over a year's growth. And then, an A is, they say, two years' growth. So, for us to be getting growth of this magnitude is really impressive. Overall, that's all students, four through eight, in English Language Arts and Math. We have an A for that. Our gifted students, an A for that. Students in the lowest 20 percent of achievement. So, again, that's a challenging subgroup. So, it's every student theoretically would line them up in the state. Your lowest 20 percent, how many of those students are in Strongsville? And what are we doing with those students and their education? And we're making huge gains with them. And lastly, students with disabilities, we have a B there. But again, that's a really impressive B, in my opinion, because they're making more than a year's growth. Overall, that gives us an A for the progress or the value added. And just looking at value-added scores in the state, we were 47th out of the 608 public school districts. So, that puts us in the top 8 percent for value added. Here's just a quick overview. How do they get that overall report card grade? We had a B. And it's broken down by percentage. We've talked about achievement, progress, and gap closing. We're in a really good place with graduation rate. We're blessed to have students that graduate in four and/or five years. So, we had an A in both four- and five-year graduation rate. The last two I wanna talk about, these are the measures in which we earned the Cs, improving at-risk K-3 readers and prepared for success. So, the first one is improving K-3 readers. As I said, we had a C in this area, and in theory, it's a fabulous idea. We wanna make sure kids are on grade level by the time they get to third grade. So, the state uses a lot of data to get this. They... In K-1, 2, and 3, we give reading diagnostics at the beginning of the year, and we report, are they on track or not on track? And then, when they take the third-grade air test in Language Arts, the state also looks at that data. The challenge with this measure is districts can set the criteria. So, which assessments do they want to use? How do they want to identify who's on track or not on track? Who do they want to put on RIMPs? Theoretically, you could put all students on a RIMP if you wanted to. We don't. We truly reserve that for those students who are not at grade level. So, when they configure the points, basically, you get dinged if they weren't on a RIMP and didn't pass or are not on grade level. You get awarded points if they came off of the RIMP or if they were on a RIMP and passed the test. All that being said, I would say we're pretty successful, even though we have a C component grade. Doing the math there, we have a 99.87 percent of students passed the third-grade reading guarantee, and that's over the last few years.
And still, we got a C.
Correct. And like I said, it's really a numbers game. You know, we do it because that's how the state configures it. But we don't chase the number. We really just provide the right instruction to the students that need it. We enrich when we need to.
So, is this saying that we're not putting enough students on the RIMPs? Are we not identifying them correctly?
It's a little more intricate. You know, we could get students that move in, and if they weren't on a RIMP in their previous district, we can put them on a RIMP. But the data in our EMAS system has already picked up the data, so they weren't qualified as being on a RIMP. Or if we decide mid-year that a student isn't on track, we could put them on a RIMP. However, the state doesn't recognize them as being on a RIMP. So, there's really like a drop-dead date that they lift this data in EMAS. And they say, "Okay, tell us all your kids that are on RIMPs." After that, you know, we're not gonna look at it again. And so, like I said, could you theoretically put every kid on a RIMP and probably get a good grade? Yes. But I don't feel, and I don't think we as a district feel, that's the best use of our teachers' time, our administrators' time. We just really wanna focus on giving kids what they need. So, that's why we don't, you know, chase the number, so to speak.
And so, one of the things, Ms. Ludwig, that I would share is, the law had a good intent. The law was about, you know, third grade is that point where if kids are behind in reading, they're gonna be behind for the rest of their lives. So, we support the law, and the idea being that, you know, school districts may not have been identifying kids, providing interventions in sports in K-3 for kids to be successful. So, I would let... Take a look at it that we are identifying the right kids. We are providing the right interventions because we are in the... That 99.87 percent is two kids over the last four years that did not meet the requirements to go to fourth grade. And so, I would say that the system, we could exactly do that. We could mess around with how we identify kids to get that grade to be better. And it's not just because we have a C that we're not saying we wanna focus on it, but I think we've got a clear measure that our kids are moving through. They're getting the supports they need. They're getting the skills that they need prior to going to fourth grade. And that's what we're most concerned about.
Would it make sense to just put any kid that we gain transfers in on a RIMP automatically when they walk in the door, if it's in August, September? Just until you get a feel for how they're doing?
Well, we do do diagnostics. By law, you have 30 days to give them the diagnostic. And from that, we can tell if they need to be on a RIMP or not. The challenge is just that date when they determine, they lift from our information system, how many kids are on RIMPs.
And we don't know that date.
It's December-ish.
But even if they're not gonna be on... We're gonna put them on a RIMP if they need to be on a RIMP.
Correct.
But we're not holding fast to this date just because, you know, "Oh, well, it's pointless. You missed the date. I don't care if..." So, we're not telling people that.
Right, absolutely.
I just wanna make that clear because it seems like we're being hold into this imaginary date.
It's just not recognized in the eyes of the state of them being on a RIMP. Although, they are, and the parents are informed of that. And, you know, we are... We have supports in place for students who aren't on grade level.
I just find it absolutely ridiculous that two students over four years, we have a 99.87 percent, and we got a C. I think it's absolutely absurd. I think lawmakers need to worry about themselves.
Right.
Yeah. I think it's ridiculous.
He turned you up.
Yeah. I guess he didn't wanna hear what I had to say, huh?
And if you remember back to the original slide, there were 13 districts that had an A in the state of Ohio out of 608. So, again, the measure could be flawed. You know, as Cameron said, we're providing the students that need the support, the supports that they need.
If you had to devise a plan to get our grade to an A, what would it be? Not that I care about... Honestly, this state report card thing is such a bunch of crap that, you know, I mean, it keeps moving. They keep changing things. They're having like, you know, essentially, second graders have to drag and drop and all this other stuff. You know, I... It's a good tool, and we are... And we're working really hard, and we're doing a great job getting it placed. But I don't really have an interest in chasing it.
Sure.
But is there a... Is there a low-effort tweak that we could do to what we do that would get us the recognition or get that grade?
I mean, short of putting more kids on RIMPs, which...
Which would then detract from the attention that the proper...
Correct.
That the kids who need it, right.
Right.
Okay. That answers my question.
A challenge for parents to say, "Your child's not on grade level. Here's a RIMP for them."
I wanna laser focus... I wanna laser focus on the kids who need it. And you're doing exactly that, so stay the course. It'll probably change the next...
Correct.
We'll get a new governor, and it'll change.
Which... Oh, yeah.
Do you think it's reasonable that third-grade ELA testing correlates with how we're gonna do on this? What I'm asking is, is if we concentrate on the third-grade ELA scores, will this take care of itself?
Not exactly, because it's kindergarten, first, second, and third grade that all gets configured into this score. So, I mean, in a way, yes, but we're still gonna have kids that come in that aren't at grade level at the beginning of the year, and we're gonna work really hard to get them on grade level. But I'm not sure that even if we have a, you know, 98 percent passage on the third-grade reading guarantee, I'm sorry, on the indicator for third grade, that that would change our score on this, to be honest.
Because I'm looking... I mean, if I look at those grades, third-grade ELA is one that we didn't meet.
Sure.
And looking at the numbers, we're talking 70 kids that didn't... Weren't... That didn't score proficient. I don't know if those 70... You know, I don't know where on the scale those 70 scored. I mean, if they're all at... If they're all at 75 percent, that's one thing. If they're at 50 percent, that's a different answer. But I don't know if... I'd wanna get a little deeper into the weeds to say, does it make... If it would make sense to concentrate on that.
And those kids honestly may have been on a RIMP the previous year or in third grade. And so, they're not even calculated into this, even if they don't pass.
Right.
So, it's not necessarily a pass or no pass. It's have they been identified as not being on grade level in current year? And then, you know, following year, in K-1 and 2, the following year. Now, are they on grade level? Or were they on a RIMP last year?
I just... To me, it seems that it would be common sense... I just, to me, it seems that it would be common sense, and I don't, I'm not ready to say it would be common sense, but it would seem to me that if they're reading better, they're going to do better on the ELA test, and vice versa, if they're, if they're able to do better on the ELA test.
Right. And I will show you at the end
Than those reading things.
The site where you can actually drill down to buildings and numbers, and it'll show you how many kids in each grade level weren't or were on a RIMP and didn't meet the indicator and so forth. The next measure, prepared for success, this is another one in which, in theory, it sounds amazing. We want our kids to be prepared for the future, and I don't think anyone here would disagree. So, the intent is, like we said, determine how well-prepared students are for future opportunities. Now, the way in which they configure this is even more convoluted. They use two years of, the last two years of graduating classes. So, for this past year, they used both 16 and 17 graduation class. And then, they count all of the students in those two years, and they assign point values to them based on how they did on three different criteria. I'm not going to get into too much detail, but remediation-free score on the ACT or SAT, if all of the parts that they took were remediation-free, we get credit for that. If they earn an honors diploma, we would get a credit for that, or an industry-recognized credential. So, those are the three ways in which we can have a student earn our point for that. A student can only get one point. Even if they get all three of those, they earn that point. So, again, like I said, the four- and five-year graduation rates, that's what the denominator is. And even if they don't graduate in one of those two classes, they're still counted in that number. So, it's not a true number of bodies sitting in the classes. They can earn some bonus points then, so if they met that first part, they can get an extra point, three-weight, if they do one of the following things, a three or higher on an AP exam, a four or higher on an IB exam, which is not something we offer. We don't have the IB curriculum, or at least three college credits before leaving high school. So, those are the only three ways. And again, they divide that by all students in the, in the two classes, 16, 17. Next year, it'll be 17, 18. So, that in itself, again, I don't think exemplifies what we are pursuing. You know, we, again, we're going to work really hard. We are ensuring that our students are college and career-ready, they're military-ready. But, it doesn't look at things like, how many of our students were in the top 10? It doesn't look at, you know, our STEM program or our Makerspace. It doesn't look at our DECA program. It doesn't look at all of the under, wonderful arts that we have, the athletics, different skills that students take into the world with them. So, this is one way that Ohio has tried to put a, to quantify a very subjective, are kids ready when they leave? Ohio has just released, it was the summer of 18, a new strategic plan. So, honestly, I envision this measure probably going away or changing, because as you can see here, this is right from their strategic plan. They're looking to identify students to have multiple paths for future success, multiple ways to show their knowledge and skills, to show that they're ready for graduation and beyond. And you can see those two measures don't necessarily cor, necessarily correlate. So, as it says, we're looking to move, Ohio's looking to move towards a more comprehensive outlook, because what we truly want, and I think we do a phenomenal job at doing, making sure our students are college, career, or military-ready when they leave Strongsville High School. And that is, you know, what the true goal of education is, I think we'd all agree with. I did include an interesting article on the last page of the slideshow, and if you can read that, but it's by an Ohio superintendent, and it's just critiquing a little bit this measure and how it is determined and why Ohio would do this to itself, when it's not mandated by law that we have this type of grade.
Erin, do we give the ACT to all of our students now?
All juniors take it, yes.
And when did we start that practice? Was the class of 2012 part of that practice?
Not 2012. Last year was the
2016?
No.
So, that score didn't reflect every student really taking the ACT, because it was an option at that point.
Correct.
So, I would perceive our score will be much higher for, if they keep the measure the same, which as we all know, it's, it probably won't. But, if they were to keep the measure the same, have we gotten those scores from this year's class that would be included in the measure to see if it would be?
Not yet.
Okay.
The, the challenge with that as well is typically, students that are moving on to college take the ACT, and then, you know, now that we have an entire grade level, all juniors take it, the only way in which they would count in this numerator in this, in this example is if on all parts of it, they were remediation-free.
But, so, if we had a student that didn't take the test at all, are they counted as zeros?
I don't think so.
They're just not counted in the
So, if there's a thousand kids that are eligible, and only 400 of them took it, and 400 of them are remedial-free, then we'd have a perfect score?
We get 400 points over
Out of a thousand.
Out of a thousand.
So, it hurts us if not everybody takes the exam.
You're reducing your chances to get that point.
Right, okay. So, it may go up a little.
In that article that you're, you're referring to, right, that's the one that mentioned only nine schools got As, 555 of them got Ds or Fs, so that left about, what, you know, 100, 100 districts that didn't, that were somewhere in the C range or something like that, right? Okay.
One of the interesting things is, one of the interesting things is, actually, William will be taking a practice test tomorrow, I believe. Either tomorrow
That's the PSAT, correct?
Yeah, but the phenomenal part of our district is, we're actually starting to prepare our children to be able to take that test in three years, four years, five years' time.
And again, that's offered to everybody now, correct?
Yeah.
The, the practice, because that didn't used to be the case. It would only be select people. Okay.
The one thing, I, I really am excited about the state's strategic plan, and if you look in the details of what this says, the, the vision is that one year outside of high school, students will be either in a two-year or four-year college, they'll be in the military, or they'll be gainfully employed. And so, that's, that's the measure. I, I agree with the superintendent's vision, and that's the measure we need to take a look at. You know, how we're going to accurately collect that data is a little more challenging in practice, but that's really what we're looking for. Whichever one of those three paths you go to, a year out of high school, are you
Are you doing something productive?
Are you doing something with that? And that's what really, that's what I think prepared for success is all about, and what we need to measure it instead of this way.
Okay, last few slides here. I wanted to provide our school buildings, their overall grades, and that's in the maroon column here on the left-hand side. And again, you have a cross. Not all the buildings have all of the measures, just due to the age levels in the buildings there. Here is the breakdown in Ohio as far as buildings and how many scored As. Again, keep in mind, you know, a K-3 building would have very few measures. So, we have As. We had 308 schools or buildings in the state that earned an A, so about 9.2 percent. The majority of our buildings fell in the B range, and that was the highest in the state. About 30 percent of the buildings in the state were at a B range. Here are the building scores, and again, this is just 2018 data here. Overall, again, the numbers are small. You do have a copy in front of you or on your device. But, what you can look at is a color-coded key. Anything green, we met the indicator between 84 and 100 percent. So, that means we consider ourselves pretty secure in that measure and continuing to do the same things that we have done. They're working. We'll continue to improve. Anything yellow means we met the measure. However, we're kind of on that borderline of it could come down to, you know, a couple kids, and we would not meet the measure. So, we want to continue our focus in those areas. And then, anything red, 79 percent or lower, we did not meet that 80 percent threshold indicator. And what's nice with this is all buildings, all principals went through all of this data. We have a ton of data. They went through it at their staff meetings with their buildings. Teachers understand it. They analyze it. They break it down into specific sub-scores and teachers and where we're doing well. They look at released test questions. So, we're doing a lot with the data besides just admiring it or, you know, looking at it and finding fault. We're actually utilizing it to improve and get better. Here is the website, which I referenced earlier, Mr. Miko, reportcard.education.ohio.gov, or you can just do a Google search for Ohio Report Cards. And it's a nice system. It will show you any building in the state of Ohio or any district in the state of Ohio in a nice format. It'll show you all of their composite grades, and then, if you want to dig deeper, all of the data is there. You can really get lost in it. So, overall, we have some areas of continuing focus, and most of these, we've talked about already, but we want to continue that grade-three ELA focus to get above 80 percent. That starts in kindergarten. We work in kindergarten, first, second, and third as well. Grade-six math, we want to continue in that area. Eighth-grade ELA, we're going to put a lot of focus, and we already are putting a lot of focus there. Math grade in eighth. Our goal is to meet all indicators, have an A in the achievement, an overall A grade, and then, as part of the 2020 plan, as we've talked about many times, be top 10 in the state by June of 2020, and be a premier district. So, I would say we are well on our way. Some supports that we have in place, rather than just, like we said, hoping that it happens, we again have the buildings in differentiated accountability tiers, so based on how they ranked, how they performed. We meet with them at scheduled times each month. We talk about different areas. What are their areas of focus? What are their building improvement plans? How can we help as central office? What do they need from us? We have our literacy coaches. Although, they're helping K-12, we have a heightened focus in third-grade ELA. And again, that filters down, as we know, the, the vertical alignment K-3. The middle-school ELA program as well. We have our new textbooks in math, sixth through eighth grade with increased rigor. We actually have the publisher, not the publisher, but a presenter from the company at the middle school, both tonight and tomorrow, giving parents kind of a in-depth view of what does the program look like? How can you access it online? What can you do at home? What supports are built in? So, I was there for the first two meetings this evening, and it's a, it's a phenomenal program. The more I learn about it, the more I'm even more impressed. Continued professional development. We're doing both internal and external professional development. We have Lori Wilfong, who works with our elementary writing. I've gone in and done some professional development. The literacy coaches have worked with teams. We send people to conferences. We make sure that they're getting what they need as far as support. As we talked about, the data analysis, we can really break it down, look in depth. Where are the areas in which we need to put more focus? Is it a curricular issue? Is it an assessment issue, where we're not teaching to the correct rigor as the test? Is it materials? So, we, we're getting into those conversations. We have the Lexia program as part of the grant that we received, and students are starting to use that, grades K through 5. What that does is identifies any skills or gaps in reading comprehension and all of the basic reading components. So, we can fill those basic holes and gaps from grades K through 5. So, I'm really excited about what I'm seeing with that. We have improvement plans at all of the buildings. All principals and directors have our developed work plans in which we target specific goals. We have our instructional innovation plan. We're in the last year of this current iteration. Of course, we have the 2020 plan, which we've talked about before at the work session or the retreat. And then, we also have an ongoing daily drive to improve. And you see it in the buildings. You see it with the principals. You see it with the teachers and the staff. Mr. Reiba and Mrs. Pelco worked really hard with the culture playbook and the focus training, and just that overall commitment to excellence. So, in summary here, we have a lot which we can be proud of. We continue to provide a top-notch education. We're seeing gains in our report card scores and in what we're doing on a daily basis. We're financially prudent in our tax dollars. Mr. Reiba talked about this last meeting, but we rank in expenditures fifth lowest in the county out of 31. But, we rank in the top 8 percent of the state in our performance or our achievement. So, 49th out of 608. So, that's really impressive there. Of course, we still have areas in which we're going to grow and improve, but in order to do so, we have a focused plan, and this plan has been well-communicated, and everybody's on the same page, moving in the same direction. And we are on track to become and remain a premier district. Questions I can answer for you about this?
I just want to congratulate the effort, and we've improved so much from last year. That strong Schools 2020 plan is right on target, because you can see the improvement. You know, and I know the plan broke it down by building, by, by topic, and we went after it in, in, in areas where we weren't performing. I know, got a lot of extra effort and a lot of extra oversight, and a lot more meetings, and a lot more Cameron and you. And so, I just want to thank you guys for the effort. It, it's paying off. I don't have any questions. Anybody have any questions on the data?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Erin.
Thank you, Erin.
And that concludes the superintendent's report.
All right. That brings us to board policy. We had the first reading on one policy, but I believe we're going to pull that. So...
We had the opportunity to get so excited about it, that we're going to have a policy committee meeting next Wednesday, same bat time, no, same bat day, but 6:00 PM in the superintendent's office. We do joke about it, but the credit card policy is very important, and we do have a deadline to get it approved. However, we want to get it right, so that when we do approve it, it will protect the taxpayer. So, we're going to take our time and have a meeting and make sure we get it right and bring forward something that we all can agree on.
I appreciate the serious effort to dig in and the extra time commitment to get it right. Board of Education, other?
I have one other.
Certainly.
Yeah, I had the opportunity today to spend the day at the high school, and I just want to encourage the parents who haven't done so to please visit all of our schools, the middle school and the high school in particular. If you have the opportunity to go have a lunch with your child, do that, to experience what Chartwell's brings to the table, because it's very good. Had an opportunity to see that today. But, more importantly, I wanted to assure everybody that what Erin just said about getting a lot of bang for our buck is absolutely true. The teachers I saw today were very engaged, very engaging of the students, covering complicated topics in a clear and professional manner. You can be proud of your kids. They're all engaged and doing well in the school, and it was just a very healthy environment. And I think in Strongsville, we need to be very proud of that, very jealous of that, and to protect that. And that brings me to the advertisement part of this. We have a levy coming up, and we need your support. We need the, the money that comes from that levy to continue the excellence in our school system for our kids, and not let it go down into the tubes where it would go if we go, we don't get the money, we have to start cutting programs and things that the, that our kids actually need to succeed in this day and age. So, for all the parents that are watching, that are engaged with the schools, we need your help. Please reach out to your neighbors, your friends, and tell them, yes, we understand it's more money on their tax bill, but it's a necessary expenditure if we want to maintain the excellence in education that we enjoy in Strongsville.
Thank you, Duke.
Tomorrow night, 6:30 Appetites is the Strongsville Rotary's Taste of Strongsville. Please come, enjoy. There'll be multiple different restaurants there, appetizers, wine. It'll be a fun event, and all the money goes towards scholarships and local charities.
I have another two, sorry. City Council is having a family fun fall event at the Strongsville Chalet, October 16. It's from 6:30 to 9:30, and there'll be hayrides and good food to have. And if you'd like to bring costumes and wear costumes, that would be fun as well. And they're also, not requiring, but if you'd like to bring a non-perishable food item to donate to the Strongsville Food Bank, that would be welcomed as well. So, again, that was October 16 from 6:30 to 9:30. It's a Tuesday night.
Thank you. Richard?
If you don't have tickets to the Rotary, I believe, if memory serves correct, the volleyball team has a game, and they're doing their, they do a give-back fundraiser every year, and that starts, I believe, at 5:00 PM at the high school. And it's a worthy, a worthy fundraiser, and I think they're up to game 16 undefeated. So, it's a real exciting time to come watch the varsity and the junior varsity and take part in their fundraiser.
Excellent. And I just remind everyone, if you've got a third- or sixth-grade hoopster, tryouts are this Sunday for the basketball league. It's highly competitive, travel league. You'll get your kid, your children noticed by the high school basketball coaches. It'll be great. And in addition to that, we've got Medina this week, homecoming game. We all know who's on that other side of the sideline, and we're looking forward to piling it on. So, let's go. Go Mustangs. That's it. Anybody? We do have need for executive session.
To consider the purchase of property for public purposes.
All right. Do you have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Thank you, Duke. Any discussion? George, could you take role on executive session?
Mr. Grozan?
Yes.
Colonel Evans?
Yes.
Mrs. Ludwig?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mr. Nasa?
Yes.
Enter an executive session at 8 o'clock?
Gosh, we don't have to wait that long, do we?
Eight o'clock?
Gosh, we don't have to wait that long, do we?
No, we don't. We won't have any, uh, business to resume when we get out. And the executive session will end at eight oh seven.